Hello and welcome. I'm Adrienne Mullenkamp from the League of Women Voters of Athens County. Thank you all for joining us tonight for this candidate forum for Athens City Council First Ward Democratic Primary. We hope that this will provide you with important information for the upcoming election. There are two candidates running for one Democratic slot on the November ballot. Those candidates are Megan Almeida and Anthony Jacobs, and we thank both of them for making the time to appear with us tonight. There was another candidate for the race, Andrew Giardelli, who withdrew from the race. It is my understanding that his name will still appear on the ballot due to the timing that he has withdrawn. If you have any questions about that, you can talk to the Board of Elections office. Please make sure that you have a voting plan for this May's primary election. The last day to register to vote or update your information is April 7th. Early voting begins the next day on April 8th. If you would like to have an absentee ballot, you can send in that written request form now, and those ballots start being mailed out on April 8th. The election day is May 6th. In addition to these candidate forums, our league publishes a voter guide in which candidates provide written answers to questions. That is now available online on vote411.org, and we will have paper copies available in the libraries later this week. The League of Women Voters is dedicated to encouraging active participation in government and educating voters. We are a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose candidates or parties. League membership is open to anyone who's at least 16 years old. You can check us out online at athensleagueofwomenvoters.org. And if you appreciate our forums and voter guides, please consider making a donation, which you can do online at the same location. So now I'm going to turn this event over to tonight's moderator, Tanya Connaught.
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening to our candidates, to those of you that have come out this evening, and also to those of you watching online. I'm going to begin by explaining the forum procedures that each candidate has agreed to in advance. Tonight's forum will include an opening statement by each candidate, a closing statement by each candidate, a question from each of our media representatives that are here tonight, and also questions submitted by the public. Candidates have two minutes for their opening statements, two minutes for their closing statements, as well as a minute and a half to answer each question asked. And there are no rebuttals in this format. The order for speaking will rotate, and I will indicate who will speak first. The candidates can see our timekeeper up front, and she will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 10 seconds remaining, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking after that time, I will say "thank you," "thank you very much," and move on to the next speaker. Candidates are invited tonight to share their qualifications, to share their experience, as well as their plans and proposals. Candidates have been asked to focus on topics relevant to the stated question while avoiding any personal attacks or raising issues that are unrelated to the office that they're seeking. If they go outside these guidelines, I may stop the forum and remind them of those guidelines. Okay, audience members, please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. And we also ask that you remain quiet through the forum. There's no clapping or cheering, but I'll invite you at the end of the forum to join me in a round of applause for both candidates. We received questions tonight by email prior to the forum, and we're also taking questions from our in-person audience. You'll see the paper and pencil on your chair. You can just put them in the air, and we have helpers that will come and collect those from you and bring them up to our question reader or question reviewers. If you need another slip of paper, just raise your hand again, and our league members will come around and give you another slip of paper. We do ask that you write legibly. It helps this whole table. Again, this is our league panel. They'll review all the questions. And just to let you know, the only reason they'll remove questions is if it's a statement instead of a question, if it's a question that cannot be answered by both candidates, or if it's duplicative of a question that we already have. We will go through as many questions as time allows, and we'll strive to cover a variety of topics. But please keep in mind, we may not have time to use every question submitted. Okay, I think that does it. And we are going to start then with our opening statements. The first candidate to give the opening statement is Anthony Jacobs.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters tonight for inviting both of us here, inviting all of us here to have this forum and have this discussion. I am thrilled to participate in the electoral process here. And so, a little bit about myself, I am a graduate of the Russ College of Engineering and Technology. I graduated with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering in 2014. Before that, I grew up in a small college town very similar to Athens called Granville, home to Denison University. And so, you know, that's why I think that coming back to Athens, living here the past few years that I've been back, I am just so passionate about wanting to do better for my community here, to just make Athens a better place to live all around. And I do hear the concerns of the constituents around my neighborhood, and I do agree with them for the most part. And my hope is to be a representative for them that can help address those issues that they have. And so, other things about me, I mean, I could tell you, you know, I have previous volunteer work with the university for my scholarship. Since graduation, I have been working in the utilities and energy delivery sector. And so, I feel like some of those skills will translate well to doing this job. And so, above all, I stand for fairness, equality, and integrity. And so, thank you all.
Thank you, Anthony. Next up is Megan Almeida, and you have two minutes, Megan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Almeida, and I want to thank you all for putting this evening together for us to come together. And I appreciate all of you taking some time out in this evening. It is a little later, so it means a lot that you're here. Ironweed is a native wildflower that grows in the Appalachian region and is known for its strong, deep roots and the ability to thrive in challenging conditions. My roots run deep, as ironweed is a phrase often used by Appalachian people, particularly women. And it's a symbolic expression for deep family ties, community, and connection to the land. For quite some time, this expression has resonated with me and deepened my commitment to finding opportunities that work toward building thoughtful and stronger communities for all of us to thrive in. In many ways, I've done a lot of growing up in Athens area. Although I'm originally from Elyria, Ohio, I moved down to Nelsonville in 1998, and I was excited about the chance to attend Hocking College and complete my first degree in Recreation and Wildlife Management. I was eager to learn about the complexities of the natural, environmental, and earth sciences. I immersed myself in learning about the land and the people who played a significant role in shaping the foothills of the Appalachian Mountains of southeast Ohio. For over the last 20 years of living in Athens, I raised my family, furthered my education at OU, and completed my undergraduate and graduate degrees, volunteered and worked at Community Food Initiatives, and served four years as an AmeriCorps member at Rural Action and their Zero Waste and Social Enterprise programs. I was a member of the City of Athens Environment Sustainability Commission for two years and a proud graduate of the Athens County Foundation Leadership Athens County Community Program. Finally, I completed a community health worker license from the Ohio Board of Nursing through Ohio University Community Health Worker Program and served as one of the first CHWs at Buckeye Hills Regional Council. Currently, I volunteer as an active board member.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to the question and answer portion of the forum. Candidates will have a minute and a half to answer each question. And candidates, if you do need me to repeat a question, please ask, and I'm happy to do so. We're going to begin with questions from the media. Thank you to Anna Miller from the Athens Messenger for attending tonight. Anna, go ahead with your question.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. It's good to see you both here and hear you speak about the issues you care about. So what I'm curious and hearing a little bit about is two large issues in this area that have come up recently, which is housing and business development in the area. So I'm curious to hear how both of you would work to bring more housing and affordable housing, as well as more business into this area for community members.
Megan, you'll answer first.
So I think we're all aware that Athens has a severe shortage of affordable housing. Runway prices have rapidly increased, and it's really competitive to find a home. I know for myself, last year around this time, I was a runner for 14 years, and I found out from the landlady that she wanted to sell the home. And so, my family and I were really faced with some difficult challenges in trying to find a place to live. I became really aware by searching for houses how the housing stock is really not the best. And being a person that doesn't have a lot of money, you start calculating and doing the math and thinking about, okay, this house is over $200,000, which I can't afford, but, you know, there's also a lot of work that needs to be done to it, too. So I'm concerned about housing for renters, for homeowners. To be more attractive for people to come in and want to live here is a big issue as well with not having a lot of choices.
Thank you. Anthony, same question.
Thank you, Anna, for that question. So yeah, I was, actually, I think I was approached by Carrie answering some questions about my candidacy and all that regarding this issue. And one of the things that I would like to explore if elected is exploring, like, rezoning of some of the areas around town. I'm certain that there are probably some places that are specifically zoned for business, specifically zoned for just residential use only. And my goal would be to start the discussion of, you know, can we look at some of these neighborhoods and maybe rezone them for mixed use? I think mixed-use zoning is really at the heart of American culture. It really, it promotes walkability. It promotes small business to come in to provide niche quality services and goods. And then it also will help to create more housing as well, perhaps in zones that are, like zoning districts that are zoned specifically for businesses that could bring in residents. And so, that would be kind of my biggest goal to try to address the housing issue that is ongoing here in Athens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to get a question from Carrie Johnson with the Athens County Independent. Go ahead, Carrie.
Hi. Thanks to the league for hosting, and thanks for the candidates for participating. My question is kind of looking into the future. So your terms are two years, so I'm thinking, two years from now, what would you have liked to accomplish serving for the First Ward on council?
And Anthony, you'll go first this time.
Thank you, Carrie. So it is quite short-term, two years. It's not a whole lot of time to get something big accomplished. But I believe that, as I told you before, I'm a civil engineer, and I actually work pretty often with our city's Office of Public Works in Engineering. And what I see with the city, and kind of, I know it's been rehashed a lot with a lot of these different construction projects going on around town, is a major lack of efficiency in construction management. And so, if all I do is serve two years on council, and if all I do is accomplish one thing, all I'd really like to do is get the city in a place where it is more efficient with its construction management practices and hiring contractors that are responsible. And then maybe adding upon that, you know, maybe exploring, you know, holding contractors accountable to deadlines, to timelines, because it just seems like there's a whole lot of, like, kicking the can down the road lately. And so, I know I'm only representing the First Ward, but I would want to have a serious discussion with the whole of the city government to accomplish something better for our construction practices in town. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanted to acknowledge that Charlie Lusk with WOUV is here tonight. Thank you for being here, WOUV. We now have questions submitted from, oh my gosh. Megan, would you like a chance to answer this question?
So it's...
Do you need Carrie to repeat?
Yeah, could you repeat it, please?
Thanks, Carrie.
So two years from now, if you're running for another term, I'm curious, like, what you would have liked to accomplish within those two years on council?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Focusing on the West Side, a lot of my strength is in bringing people together. I would love to find different opportunities that create more of a, kind of, a neighborhood of, neighborhoods of people that come together and help each other out a little bit more. So, for example, we're putting on a West Side cleanup here in the next couple of weeks. And with one event, it's, it is meant for the neighborhoods to get together, check in with each other, help out, clean up around their houses, and maybe see if their neighbor would need some help. And we feel like that would foster a sense of opportunity for people to talk and get to know each other so down the road they can, you know, be more thoughtful of each other and build up that community. I also really appreciate the Athens West Side Association. I know that it disbanded for a little bit due to COVID, and it's coming back. I really look forward to that opportunity and encouraging people with these events and getting us together that we can expand and really enhance our association and do even bigger things.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, we are now going to move on to questions from the public. Megan, you will be the first to answer this question, and this is a two-parter. First, why do you want to represent the First Ward? And then, second, what qualifications do you have to represent both homeowners and tenants alike?
Well, I've already shared with you all that I've been a runner 14 years, really 26 years total. I figured that out recently. I've been more of a runner than a homeowner in my whole adult life. I just recently, with the house that I've been running, I ended up with my partner being able to purchase that home. So it is the second home I've ever owned. So I think having the two worlds, having the perspectives of what it is to be a runner and what those experiences look like, and the same as a homeowner and what that looks like, and try to strike a balance between the two. And I apologize, the first, the other part...
The first part was, why do you want to represent the First Ward?
Well, I would love to, I love Athens. I've been here for so long. It's, it is our home. My family is here. I've raised my children. I feel, I've worked with so many different organizations, nonprofits. I've attended school. I've, you know, having kids, you're involved in that whole kid scene and family scene. And so, I just feel like my track record, I've always given back to the community in which I live in. And I have definitely done that for Athens. And representing... And representing the West Side would just be another way that makes sense to me to continue giving back to my community. It's a privilege to be sitting here tonight and to possibly have the opportunity to sit on council.
Thank you, Megan. Anthony?
Okay, so why do I want to represent the First Ward? I think because, first and foremost, I live there. Megan lives there, too. You know, we're, we are residents. But I live right in the heart of the neighborhood. And since I first came to OU, I have always been a, a Westsider. I had decided, I was like, I'm in the College of Engineering, I want to live on West Green, because that's where Stocker Center is, that's where my classes will be. And even beyond my years in the dorms on West Green, then continued to work on West Green, lived on West Washington, lived in the apartments up Schaefer, just all different places on the West Side. And then when I had the opportunity to come back, lo and behold, my friend rented me a room on Brown Avenue. And so, and then soon after, I was able to find my permanent home up on Elizabeth. And so I love the West Side, and I really want to represent everyone on the West Side in their best interests. And as far as my qualifications, I mean, the really good news is that I was just elected Chair to the West Side Community Association, and I am actually working with Megan to help volunteer for her program for the cleanup efforts. And so if anybody wants to volunteer for that, that, you know, talk to us, please. And so, yeah, that's about all I got.
Thank you. The next question, Anthony, you'll answer first. And the question is, how will you communicate with the people in Ward One?
That's actually a really difficult question for me, because truth be told, I currently do not have, like, any social media. I disavowed social media, I think, back in 2017. And so now I am finding that I am going to have to rejoin Facebook. I am going to have to seek, maybe do an Instagram, do a YouTube channel, all of that. Because according to Solvee, the current First Ward Councilwoman, she says her number one communication method with constituents is via Facebook Messenger. And so I think that's just something I have to do. And so that seems to be the majority of the constituents' preferred method of communication. And I, I, I want to support that. I want to be there anytime anyone would have a question for me. So yield back my time.
Thank you. Same question, Megan. How will you communicate with the people in Ward One?
Well, I already mentioned the West Side Association organization. That would be one effective way. I would make sure that I would show up to as many meetings as I can. I also have little dreams of creating kind of roundtable sessions, maybe like quarterly, somewhere on the West Side. It can be as laid back as maybe being at the cider house, or talking to the church in my neighborhood to see if that space could be utilized for things like that. The other thing is Arts West. I feel like at times can be underutilized. I always have visions of bringing Westsiders together, having sessions where we can be productive and talk about things, and, and allow me to practice active listening, which then it can transform into communicating to other city leadership to be that voice for the Westsiders. I also walk around the neighborhoods a lot. I'm not a stranger, and I feel that I'm very approachable. So if you ever see me out walking, please, I'm always more than happy to take some time and invest in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. Megan, you will be the first to answer. If the income tax increase fails at the polls, what cuts would you recommend be made in the city budget?
If the city tax levy...
There's an income tax increase on the ballot. If that fails, what cuts would you recommend be made in the city budget?
Well, that's a hard question, especially, I don't know if that would be something that I would think about alone. I feel like I would be leaning into the team and coming up with some solutions to address dealing with cuts. So I'm not comfortable, entirely comfortable answering that question, but I accept that I would, that I'm new to this, and it would be something that I would be invested in learning a lot more about. Thank you.
That is a toughie. I'm not going to lie. As far as cuts go, I mean, I would hope that we wouldn't need to immediately start cutting jobs, cutting programs, because it's, it's, it's not like the, the budget is, you know, the city isn't going to have a budget. It's just we wouldn't have that budget increase. And so I think that a better solution would probably be to, you know, look at, how does the city generate more capital, particularly regarding the construction practices going on around town? I mean, for example, there, the, the most recent city council meeting was, one of the big hot-button topics of it was this illegal construction of this parking space on Woodward Avenue. And if I were on city council, I'd have that developer's head. That is totally unacceptable, and I would do everything in my power to make them put the right-of-way back to the way it was. And so I think that by doing those sorts of things, by holding contractors accountable, by charging fees, those are ways that we can make up the budget shortfall, rather than making cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on to the microphone, Anthony. You're the first one to answer this next question. And this is about rental housing. What are some ways rental housing in the city could be improved?
That's, that is also a great question. I think that, first and foremost, it would probably be important to have a conversation with some of the town's large renters, large landlords. We all know who they are. And, and just seeing the decline in, in quality of life with, with, or the quality of housing, rather, which, you know, ultimately leads to a decline in quality of life, you know, I, I just think that if, if we can somehow implore these landlords to just, just have some pride in their properties, you know, do what's right, you know, be like, hey, you know, if you were really down on your luck, would you want to live in this unit? You know, and, and, and if we can have that kind of open communication with the powerful, then, then, you know, maybe we can begin to affect some positive change with the housing situation in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, same question. What are some ways rental housing in the city could be improved?
I think there needs to be more accountability. For a long time now, at least in the 20 or so odd years I've been living here, I feel like the code office is in a weird place. Like, I think that they need more support. Expanding the code office would really help. There could be so many different things that could evolve out of that. For example, if we had an extra code officer or a bigger staff, maybe we would be able to educate, provide more information, resources for landlords, just show ways of working together more cooperatively, I feel, would bring a lot of positive change. And the code office tends to be more of the traditional setup, where I feel like, again, a cooperative compliance approach would cultivate more a positive side to the code office, that they feel good and they're not stressed out, that they have the support, and then they're able to actually do their jobs more effectively, and get out into the community more, and address some of the housing issues, and bring them back into compliance.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Megan, you will be answering first. As someone who lives in Ward One, what are the things that you take pride in? What would you like to see improved?
I take pride in the neighborhoods. I think there's lots of creative people on the West Side, from their gardens to their art that they have maybe on garages or sides of houses. It always brings me so much joy to be in the neighborhood. Because of all the art and the creative people, I would love to see more art incorporated into our yards and be more expressive that way. Yeah. Thank you.
Anthony, same question. What are the things that you take pride in, and what would you like to see improved?
Oh, I, I take pride in so many things on the West Side. I, I just, like I've said before, I love it. I take pride in, you know, my home. I take pride in the fact that, you know, it's, it's just such an easygoing neighborhood, and, and everyone is so neighborly and, and so supportive. And I can tell you already, just in the couple years I've been, been back here, you know, I've already, you know, had so many parties, like block parties between neighbors' houses. And, and that's, that's just the kind of community I'm looking for and, you know, and that I, I want to, you know, grow old, you know, experiencing, you know? So, um, room for improvement, you know, I, I would really like to see something done with the former West Side Elementary site, you know? It's just kind of like a big, you know, open field now, I guess. And I, I think if we could do something with that, that would be really cool, turn it into some kind of park. I mean, I know we've got the West Side, or the West State Street Park right there, but, you know, green space never hurts either, and, or maybe we do something different with it. We could explore options there. And I do agree with Megan's sentiment, you know, I'd love to see more art, you know, on, on people's houses, you know, all around the West Side. There are some really cool pieces all around the West Side as well, so, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, the next question reads, what recent city council issues most interest you? And Anthony, you'll be answering this question first.
Well, I think I touched on it earlier. I, you know, I just heard about this Woodward Avenue thing, and I'm just like, whoa, that kind of boils my blood a little bit. I'm like, so, you know, I, I think, but it's also an excellent point of, like, you know, you know, why do we have developers, you know, trying to go back and get retroactive permits? Why didn't they approach the city and get a permit, you know, upfront, like they were supposed to, like how that works in any municipality? So, you know, I, I mean, I, part of my experience going back to, before I moved to Athens, I lived in Akron, and I worked for the gas company up there. And, you know, it was my daily job to have to go to the city of Cleveland, go to the city of Akron, and, and ask for a right-of-way permit to put in a gas pipe. Like, it's just, you have to do it. And so, yeah, I just, that's, that's probably, you know, that, you know, I know we've had, the, the council has had discussion with, you know, Lostro Project. Those are kind of the things that I am aiming to improve upon. And again, because, you know, I, I want local businesses to have ingress and egress when they're, you know, when they're dealing with a construction project outside. And I don't think that it's unreasonable to expect that and to plan that, you know? And it takes everybody. It takes the city, and it takes constituents, and we can all work together to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Thank you. Megan, same question. What recent city council issues most interest you?
I would have to say housing and tenant rights is something that I do tend to, my partner can definitely say, I watch every, almost every council meeting on Monday nights. And I always appreciate the discussions and watching folks in our community, I believe, really, really trying to find some solutions to such a huge problem that we're faced with. I, also with the small businesses, that's been something that's been really concerning for me as well. I have been a big proponent for many, many, many years to try to stay as local as I can. I understand how important it is, knowing that a lot of our businesses are families, our neighbors. And so I always have done the best that I can to try to support our local businesses. And when I see things that are confusing, and I don't quite understand why our businesses, our local businesses aren't more visible, and that they're not being communicated to enough, it seems, that really elevates my curiosity and motivates me to want to learn more and be a part of coming up with some solutions like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, the next question, and Megan, you will be the first to answer. How do you feel about the resolution recently passed by the city council to support the LBGTQ-plus population?
I cried. I thought it was the best thing, and I was so, so proud to see my community of people come together and be supportive and loving to people that exist and are here, and are lovely, wonderful community members. So when they passed that resolution, it made me feel a great sense of pride. And, and as well, you know, feeling like my community is safer for my family, my kids, other kids that I know, that they're able to be themselves, and know that they're surrounded by a community of people that do want to create a safe space, or, as they said, a safe haven, that Athens is a safe haven.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, so, you know, I am a cis male, straight, white, like, but I also think that this is America, and that people deserve to be who they want to be. They absolutely deserve to live the lives that they want to live. That is what freedom stands for. And so I think that the initiative passing, you know, I'm a little torn, because I'm just like, I don't understand why we, we need to affirm this. But I am, at the same time, I'm happy that we are affirming it. And, and, you know, I see these folks, and, and, you know, I, I want them to know, like, they are loved, you know, they are supported, that, 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 you know, even though our federal government doesn't seem to agree, that doesn't matter. What matters is the people of this country. And we will win. We will fight back. And this is a great first step, I think.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Anthony, you'll be the first to answer. And this is a hypothetical. It says, an issue arises, and a majority of your constituents feel one way, but you feel the opposite way. How would you respond?
So I think that, you know, if I felt strongly enough about some, you know, I know we're just talking generic issue here, but maybe I would make a case if I felt like, you know, the constituents aren't well-informed enough about what's going on. I, I would want to have a conversation with my constituents and say, well, you know, I don't really agree with your sentiment as your representative, and here is why. agree with your sentiment as your representative, and here is why." You know, I want to be able to back that up. Ultimately, you know, if I am still outnumbered and, you know, my constituents want it one way, first and foremost, I am a representative of the people, and so I will honor what the people want.
Thank you. Megan, same question. Sure, it's a hypothetical-based question, where an issue arises and a majority of constituents feel one way, but you feel the opposite way. How would you respond?
So I'm thinking about some experience I had working when I first moved into Athens myself and another person got together and co-founded an educational cooperative. We were diverse in families, and some of our meetings were really challenging. We would have some folks want a vision a certain way, or a structure or organization to the day, and then others may not have agreed. I somehow just immediately became sort of the mediator. I fell into that role very naturally and saw myself as the glue. I'm really good at always striving to practice active listening and patience when it comes to that, and really investing time in listening to people, even if it doesn't work out their way, encourage people to keep working towards something new and try to make it more of a positive experience.
Thank you. Okay, Megan, you are up first on this next question. And this questioner poses, whether you're elected or not, will you continue to work together with the other candidate, the council, and other community organizations to coordinate efforts in a cooperative rather than an adversarial manner?
Yeah. It's, I'm a firm believer in cooperative work. I, if I were not to win, I completely like this person a lot over here, and I would definitely, I walk by your house a lot, you know, I know where you live. So, you know, I would make an effort to, yeah, to still be involved. I've always been involved in Athens community in some capacity, so I would definitely find other ways. If I didn't get elected to council, I would still be out there providing support. My background, I have a strong background in volunteerism and community development, community service, so it's really natural for me to just keep going, so, and, yeah, and contribute to our community.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've said it before earlier this evening, you know, we are all in this together, and ultimately, I mean, we are intertwined, you know, I know we're opponents here tonight, but, you know, I already know, like, I'm looking very much forward to working with Megan for that cleanup effort coming up here in April. And, you know, and those are the types of things that I want to continue to perpetuate, and, you know, and I want Megan to continue to be a part of the West Side Community Association. And so, again, you know, even though we're opponents here on this ballot, like, the ultimate goal here is to, you know, achieve a better community for ourselves here. And so, I just think, you know, no matter who wins, you know, we are taking steps in the right direction here.
Thank you. Okay, this next question, Anthony, you'll be first to answer. And this is about an issue that has been in front of council recently, it's no longer, but the question is, what are your thoughts about the past proposed affordable housing unit on Pomeroy Road that's on the South Side? This has been tabled by city council, and I think it's also been withdrawn, but this questioner wants to know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so, I actually, I was educated on this topic because I watched part of the previous forum for the candidates at large, and so I do thank the folks here that were part of that for getting me informed on that. And so I guess my understanding is that there was a developer that wanted to put up affordable housing, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't run more than like 30, 35% of renters' income. And I guess there was a strong opposition. I'm not familiar with that area, I guess, or explored it too often, but I guess kind of going back to one of the previous questions, there were a lot of constituents in that neighborhood that were strongly opposed to it, and I don't know exactly why they were opposed to it. I'm sure they had good reasoning, they obviously had good reasoning because they were able to put a stop to it. And so, again, you know, if, that would probably be a good example to the earlier question, where, you know, like, if it were me, you know, I would be a proponent of trying to get some affordable housing developed, but ultimately, if my constituents say no, you know, I have to honor them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Megan? Repeat? Sure, sure, sure. What are your thoughts about the prior proposed affordable housing unit on Pomeroy Road, which has now been tabled by city council, and I think the proposal has also been withdrawn? But the questioner wants to know kind of your thoughts on that.
Thank you. I did actually keep up with a lot of the council meetings online and watched and listened. I used to live on the South Side, actually on Far Hills Drive, so I'm really familiar with that area, biking, walking. Actually, back in those days, I was a one-car family. My kids and I biked from that side of town to the pool and back. It is very dangerous. Some of the concerns were valid, but I feel like we, as a community, didn't trust the process, that we should have really kept more of an open mind and not let fear, fear of change, really creep in and not consider this. We have a serious issue with affordable housing in our community. As evidence, our homeless population is higher than it's ever been. And when I see that, and I live day-to-day in this community, it breaks my heart knowing that we can't afford to miss out on opportunities and work hard and come together and really, really come up with some solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, this will be our last question before we move to closing statements. Megan, you'll start. And the question is, as a city council member, on which committee would you like to serve and why?
I would like to serve, I think it would be the Environment and Sustainability Commission, is that a committee? Or the Affordable Housing would be of interest to me as well. I feel like my background, my background is in natural science, outdoor education. My master's is in Science and Environmental Studies, so it's really natural for me to gravitate to groups of people that would be working on, like, our city's Sustainability Action Plan. I have a huge interest in that and would love to work closely from this angle instead of just being a commission member like I have been, to be able to work on the other side with council and city leadership and participate that way.
Thank you. Anthony?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. I think that if elected, I would really like to serve on the Transportation Committee. And actually, currently, I do believe Solvee is the chair of that committee. And so, basically, the Transportation Committee is responsible for sidewalks, street maintenance, and I just think that, like, it aligns really well with my goals for becoming city councilman for the first ward, which I've told you before, you know, I want to improve our construction practices, I want to improve permitting, and ingress and egress from local businesses. And so I do believe that being a part, at least a part of the Transportation Committee would be most relevant for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to closing statements. Each of you will have two minutes for your final remarks, and we're going to begin with Anthony Jacobs.
Again, I thank you all for this opportunity to speak here tonight, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for inviting us here, having us here, having this discussion, because it is important to talk about these issues and be informed before an election. And so I just want to say, I'm running on the platform of integrity and virtue. I have no special interests in town. I do not own any businesses. I have no financial interests with other businesses that might other compromise my integrity and ethics. I will not be bought or sold. I will return respect to the city government, and I will return accountability and authority. The constituents have had enough with the complacency, and so if elected to city council, I vow to end the profligacy. Know that no matter the outcome of who wins here, we are all winners when we support our community and support the outcome. Now, Athenians, I want something from you. Get out and vote on May 6th. Do your duty. Do your duty to Athens' honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
So I've lived on the West Side for 14 years, and I understand a lot of the challenges of such a diverse population of people who have different needs and experiences. I genuinely care about improving the quality of life in our city and will work hard at making it a priority to listen to the needs of the people and build bridges that connects their voices to city leadership, especially when making decisions. I want to improve city communications and create more transparency to the West Side residents. One way I hope to achieve this is by showing up and providing support to the West Side Community Association. I'm passionate about the City of Athens Sustainability Action Plan, and if elected, I would look forward to finding opportunities to work closely with city leadership as well as community members, businesses, and organizations who are committed to implementing the city's sustainability initiatives. Every single issue within a community is connected to sustainability and resiliency. Creating a more sustainable community means balancing and integrating the social, economic, and environmental components within the community. The Athens Sustainability Action Plan captures a structured community vision to help generate a more robust local economy, protect and work within our environmental assets, and create a more healthy and resilient community for all of us to live in. I'm deeply concerned with housing issues and tenant rights. Although prioritizing the need for more access to affordable housing is a very important issue and also connected to tenants' rights, I feel strongly about improving rental experiences within Athens. The city has not been able to keep up with holding property owners more accountable for the conditions of our rental homes, and this has resulted in substandard housing options that force so many to live in unsafe and unhealthy conditions. Tenant rights are a community health issue, and it's critical to ensure tenants' rights are protected. Housing stability is not just a legal issue, but it's a public health and community well-being concern. Thank you.
I'd like to close this forum by thanking all candidates for their participation in our democratic process, and we can now give them a round of applause. I would also like to extend our thanks to the City of Athens Government Channel staff, including Ryan Schwartzoff, for recording this event tonight. You'll be able to watch this again on the City of Athens YouTube channel and on its Facebook page. You can also find this recording on the League of Women Voters of Athens County Facebook page, and will also be replayed on the Government Channel, which is Channel 1024. And I also want to thank the people of Athens for submitting so many thoughtful questions tonight and for joining us to learn more about these two candidates. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Check your voter registration at voteohio.gov to make sure it is up to date. And please know that for this primary election, you can still register to vote through April 7th, and that early voting starts the next day on April 8th. And you can go vote in-person at the Athens County Courthouse, or, I'm sorry, at the Athens County Board of Elections, which is right next to the Athens County Courthouse. And then, in-person, the big election day for this primary is May 6th. So, thank you all, and have a great evening.